Adrian N. Brightfelder, City Clerk. You're hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, November 15th, 2021, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for November 15th, 2021. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to when phone lines are unmuted. All phone lines will be unmuted during the consent agenda, public hearings, and public input periods, and city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Buell.
Here.
Council members Kavanaugh.
Here.
Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Buell, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, thank you, Adrian. I will ask all who are able to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Adrian.
For proclamations, our first is the Dubuque Service Partnership and Vaccine Clinic Volunteer Appreciation Day.
Okay, is there anyone in the chambers to accept us? Please, come to the podium.
Hi, my name is Marie Zarovsky, and I'm the Director of the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program.
Did you want to say something about proclamation before or after?
I would love to, yeah. I just want to say thank you very much for honoring the COVID volunteers. It was a really important clinic here in Dubuque County. I think it was a great example of how government, nonprofit, and community organizations working together towards a common goal can do something positive for their community. By the numbers, we had about 2,900 hours of service, which equates to $68,300 in value of service to the community. Also, on our busiest day, we had over 1,400 people through the clinic. But more importantly, the volunteers connected the community to the providers, welcoming the community, screening, transporting, wayfinding, and getting them safe back and out the door. And I'd like to say thank you to all the volunteers for your time and your talent. The Vaccine Clinic would not have been as big a success without you. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here this evening to accept this proclamation on behalf of all those folks. City of Dubuque proclamation: Whereas the World Health Organization has reported an outbreak of thousands of cases of novel coronavirus 2019, or COVID-2019, and declared a global pandemic in March of 2020, prompting federal, state, and local proclamations. And whereas in response to the pandemic, AmeriCorps seniors, AmeriCorps, and United Way of the Dubuque Area Tri-State filled a vital role in assisting local public health agencies by providing volunteers to staff the point-of-distribution, or POD, Vaccine Clinic, which provided thousands of vaccines to members of our community. And whereas the volunteers accumulated over 2,900 hours, saving local public health agencies an estimated $68,347 over the five months the POD was in operation. And whereas the volunteers provided an essential service of welcoming patients, screening, assisting in directing patients, monitoring the POD, cleaning and disinfecting between patient uses, performing tasks and duties as assigned, and providing emotional support for our community members. And whereas the volunteers were a key resource in our fight against COVID-19. Now therefore, I, Roy D. Buell, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and citizens of Dubuque, hereby proclaim the 15th of December, 2021, as Dubuque Service Partnership and Vaccine Clinic Volunteer Appreciation Day in the City of Dubuque, Iowa. Okay. Thank you very much for all you do. Tell everyone thank you for us as well. Thank you. Okay, and our next proclamation is pancreatic cancer awareness.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Diane Oglesby-Rambisak, and I am the President of the Michael W. Oglesby Foundation, which was founded after my brother died of pancreatic cancer after a short diagnosis of 60 days. Our goal and our mission is to bring hope and treatment to those affected by pancreatic cancer. November is Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. We want to bring awareness not only to our community but surrounding communities. In the last 40 years, there has been little research, and it's actually the least funded of all the top 10 cancers in the world. And there are no screening studies for pancreatic cancer, there's no effective treatments, and no cure. So we are trying to bring about awareness and looking at Thursday, November 18th, as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day. It is in the City of Dubuque but also Worldwide Pancreatic Cancer Day.
Okay, well, thank you for being here this evening, Diane, to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque proclamation: Whereas pancreatic cancer has become one of our time's most devastating diseases, and has surpassed breast cancer to become the third-leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States, and is projected to become the second-leading cause by the year 2025. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate at just 10%, and it is the seventh-most common cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally in later stages, and only 10% of pancreatic cancer patients are diagnosed when the disease is confined to their pancreas, and 91% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years of diagnosis. And whereas it is projected that in 2021 approximately 580 Iowans will be diagnosed and 470 deaths will occur. And whereas the long-term health and well-being of the residents of Dubuque are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and ongoing research into early detection, causes, and effective comprehensive treatments. Now therefore, I, Roy D. Buell, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and citizens of Dubuque, hereby proclaim the 18th day of November, 2021, as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day in the City of Dubuque, Iowa. There's two copies. Thank you very much. Thank you for all you do. Okay, and our final proclamation this evening is Small Business Saturday.
I'm Dan Sullivan, the Vice President of Membership for the Dubuque Area Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of myself and the Chamber of Commerce, we thank you for this proclamation of Small Business Saturday. It is our goal with the Chamber to promote local business and encourage everyone to keep their shopping dollars in the Dubuque community, not only during the holiday but the rest of the year. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan, for being here this evening to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque proclamation: Whereas the City of Dubuque celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States that are responsible for 65.1% of net jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas small businesses employ 47.1% of all private sector employees in the United States. And whereas 88% of U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And whereas 92% of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Roy D. Buell, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and citizens of Dubuque, hereby proclaim the 27th of November, 2021, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and urge the residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
We will move on to consent items. Kavanaugh.
Aye.
At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss Farber.
Aye.
That motion carries 7-0.
We will move on to items set for public hearing, and we have four. one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or First is 2021 redistricting plan for city wards and precincts. state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual Second is proceedings for public hearing on the issuance of not-to-exceed $1,575,000 input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the water revenue capital loan notes interim financing, state revolving funds, planning speaking order of the participants. and design loan applications. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion Third is proceedings for public hearing on the issuance of not-to-exceed $900,000 sewer and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages 2 through 5 of the agenda. revenue capital loan notes interim financing, state revolving funds, planning and design
Thank you, Adrian. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like anything on the consent agenda held
loan applications.
for separate discussion?
And fourth is 2022 John F. Kennedy Road sidewalk installation project, all four for December
Do we have any virtual requests?
There are no comments in the GoToMeeting chat, and our phone participants have been
6th, 2021.
Mr. Mayor.
unmuted as well.
Mr. Resnick. Thank you.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearing for
And, Mr. Mayor, the City Clerk has not received any emails.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll bring you back to the table then for any discussion.
December 6th, 2021. Mr. Mayor.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Mr. Resnick, second by Ms. Farber. Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the
Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
consent items as recommended.
Aye.
Buell.
Second by Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Motion by Mr. Resnick, second by Mr. Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Aye.
Resnick. Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Aye.
Buell. Farber.
Aye.
Aye.
Rousell.
That motion carries 7-0.
Aye.
The public hearings will be held in the council chambers on the date as the times
Jones.
indicate.
Aye.
We'll move on to boards and commissions, and we have appointments for the Civic Center Sprank. Advisory Commission and the Resilient Community Advisory Commission.
Okay, at this time, we have appointment to the Civic Center Advisory Commission. There are two openings and three applicants. Adrian, I would ask you to call the roll, and each council member can select two of those applicants.
Resnick.
Tyler Doherty and Bryce Parks.
Buell.
Tyler Doherty and Bryce Parks.
Rousell.
Tyler Doherty and Bryce Parks.
Jones.
Tyler Doherty and Bryce Parks.
Sprank.
Tyler Doherty and Bryce Parks.
Kavanaugh.
Tyler Doherty and Bryce Parks.
Farber.
Tyler Doherty and Bryce Parks.
Okay, Tyler Doherty and Bryce Parks are appointed to three-year terms through June 29th, 2024, on the Civic Center Advisory Commission. Next, we have the Resilient Community Advisory Commission, and we have one opening and one applicant.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Rousell.
I move to appoint Catherine Connelly to the Resilient Community Advisory Commission.
We'll move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please plan to approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. And public hearing number one is request to rezone property at Bee's Drive.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications, and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed to be suspended.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Sprank. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, this is Planning Services Manager, Wally Wormont.
Okay, Wally, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. The request before you tonight is to rezone the property located at Bee's Drive. It's a two-acre parcel located behind Phoenix Theater, behind the mall, on Bee's Drive, from C-3 general commercial with conditions to a POD, planned unit development with a PR, planned residential designation. The property owner is working with a potential developer to look at constructing two 28-unit multifamily buildings on the site. The property currently consists of two lots that will be consolidated for the purpose of this development, and the lot has over 275 feet of frontage along Bee's Drive at that location. The zoning advisory commission held a public hearing, and at that meeting, Dave Frummelt, who represented the property owner, spoke in favor of the request. They referred to the attached conceptual development plan, which is included in the packet of information, and he expressed that it's a good location for transition, a multifamily, from the heavy commercial area of the Kennedy Mall to these condos and multi-unit apartment buildings located on Bee's Drive and Wingate Drive. A planning staff presented a staff report noting characteristics of the property. There are some existing easements located on the property which will help facilitate setbacks from property lines. Staff did note that the proposed planning of development will replace an existing conditional rezoning for the site. The site has been rezoned several times. Most of those conditions that were placed on the property had to deal with some screening, but then also not taking access off of Kebby Drive, and that's the case with this development. There is no intention to take access off of Kebby Drive. Access will be coming from Bee's Drive. The zoning advisory commission discussed the request, and they also felt that the proposed conceptual development layout would be appropriate as an infill development as it transitions from the commercial area to the residential area. So by a vote of six to zero, with one abstention, the zoning advisory commission recommends that the City Council approve the request to rezone the two parcels from C-3 general commercial with conditions to PR planned residential. A simple majority vote is needed for the City Council to approve this request. And in addition, Vice Chairperson Becky Kemp is present, and she's available to answer any questions that may have the zoning advisory commission. Otherwise, that is all I have unless you have any questions with me.
Okay, thank you very much, Wally. Anyone have any questions for Wally or Becky?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Rousell.
Wally, this is Susan, and just regarding the safety and the accessibility of Bee Street there as you're walking down and Century, I actually took a ride over the weekend to kind of see that corner that is a wooded section. Will there be ample sidewalks along that road and the Century side? Do you know?
Yes, so as part of this development, the property owner will be required to install sidewalks along Bee's Drive. They're also, the engineering, they have to submit a site plan that goes through our development review meeting process. It'll be reviewed by the engineering department, planning, building, fire, and water departments. And in addition, that intersection there is kind of wonky. You have Bee's Drive that kind of ties into Sylvan Drive at a different angle. The engineering department has located the location, or has approved the location of the drive accessing of the property. As I mentioned, this property has been available for several years, and we've had several discussions with potential developers of developing the site, and as they have approved the location of that curb cut. So there will be some improvements in the future to that intersection, but at this time, with the location of access to the parking and the requirement for a sidewalk being installed along that, that will be the conditions as part of the site plan review process.
Okay, thank you. And then I have one more question about the fact that it's a wooded area currently. Will there be some kind of a green space or some kind of a barrier between the complex and the back of the Phoenix-Kennedy Mall sections? Do you know?
So as part of the site plan review process, there's a tree planting and shrub planting requirement with site plans. Normally, it's the other way around. Normally, commercial development would be screened from the residential development. So there is no screening requirement for this multifamily residential development from the commercial side. They would just be required to provide the required amount of trees and shrubs as required by ordinance. There is some landscaping, buffer yard requirements for their parking lot areas that they'll have to provide some plantings in there, but there will be no screening requirement from the commercial side to this development.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Rousell.
Yep. Wally, I have a similar question because it is a wooded area, and can you tell me how, how will we, or what are the requirements by the developer to replace those trees? There's a lot of them, and I know they can't replace that many on the property. So how do we, how do we not, as a community, lose that many trees from our tree canopy?
Sure, so as the development goes through, in the location of a lot of those trees, there's an easement for utilities that go through the site. And as you can see on the conceptual development plan included in your packet, they're proposing to place the building almost right up to the edge of that easement. So a majority of those trees will have to be removed, and the replacement of it will just be what we require in the unified development code, the trees. If they do keep some of the trees, that helps satisfy their tree planting requirement. But unfortunately, there is nothing that would protect them from removing all those trees from that site.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Resnick.
Yes, thank you. And, Wally, maybe I missed this because it's a little hard to hear, or maybe it's just me, but I know there'll be other opportunities to comment on this and shape this, but I do want to comment a little bit on some of the other comments I've heard at the table. I spent a lot of time on that street, actually, this past summer because of moving and in and out of the units back there, and there's just a lot of, lot of stuff going on back there. 56 units of apartments in this area. I know we're going to get a traffic study, and you commented on the, I think the word was wonky streets, but it is a traffic, there's a tricky traffic pattern back there, and the neighbors have complained to me about the speeding situation and that everybody kind of cuts, and it's difficult right now, and of course, there's no sidewalks that was mentioned. And so, you know, I know that's going to come before us, and hopefully, there'll be some, you'll have some great ideas on how to mitigate those tricky situations. My question to you, and this may come later too, do you know if these are going to be all market-rate apartments, or are there going to be housing choice vouchers involved with this, or are we just too early to talk about that?
That hasn't been discussed at all with staff. We've been working directly mainly with the proposed realtor who's selling the property. I don't know if Dave Frummelt is present in the chambers. He might be able to answer that question. But to our knowledge, most of the time when it is the affordable housing, multi-development type projects, they're usually applying for IFA funds for that, and to my knowledge, they have not applied for funding for affordable housing or workforce housing, whether it's senior or workforce, at this time for that development.
Okay, thank you very much. And I know this is just a zoning, just to start it, Mr. Mayor, but there'll be other things to come up, and I see that our zoning advisory commission strongly recommended we go forward with this, and I intend to do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Wally? Okay, we are in a public hearing to consider city council approval of a request from Dave Frummelt, American Realty, to rezone property located at Bee's Drive from C-3-C General Commercial Zoning District with conditions to PR Planned Residential Zoning District to allow for the development of a multifamily residential development. Is there anyone in the council chambers to address us on this?
Yes, my name's David Frummelt, 995 Prince Philip Drive in Dubuque here. I've been representing the Clawer family who owns this property for quite a while, and obviously, it needed, 2.3 acres, needed to have the right person or product in that area. One of the things I'd like to answer is in reference to the trees. We had a couple of the professional tree people out there to look at that last year. About 90% of the trees in there are scrub trees. They stated basically they'd just be bulldozed over and taken out. Obviously, the developer may, and he's unavoidably not here tonight, but I'm sure that he'll try to keep as many of the trees that fit the area as he can, but most of those are scrub trees that are in there. So in reference to that part of it, you know, the other, the other thing is, is to look at ingress and egress that was brought up in reference to that. And the city has had a couple of plans that we've looked at over the last two, three years in reference to Sylvan being realigned, and then in reference to the ingress point for the development being right across from that. So there's actually two plans that engineering has, has looked at when that time comes that they're going to do that. So that, you know, that I think can be answered to help with the safety and, and the rest of that. The other thing is, is the fact that, and nice for the, for everyone, is that you've actually got three access points. You have Pennsylvania, you have Dodge Street, and you have JFK because of the Kennedy Mall area. So, you know, there's actually three ways to get to this site, which I think helps that situation not make it all in one area. I know the Clawers would like your approval on this. I think it'd be an asset to that area. I think it'd be a great buffer between commercial and, and residential, and again, we kindly ask for your approval. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Frummelt?
Yeah, Dave. Are there going to be market-rate apartments?
I can't answer that, and truthfully, only because of the fact that the developer is not here tonight. If he could answer that, I really didn't look into that part, or, you know, we're looking more at the land, the price, the property, the building, et cetera. So I can't answer that.
But we will be educated about that at some point.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else to address the council in the chambers? Okay, do we have any virtual input?
We do not on this item.
And the City Clerk has not received any emails.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring you back to the table for any discussion.
I do have one more question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Kavanaugh.
This, actually, I thought of it after we got done talking to Wally, but it's a Wally question. You know, I'm looking at the map and thinking about the neighbors. I mean, and I saw that there were no public comments in the hearing. Were the neighbors all notified? I mean, neighbors from, you know, from Kebby Drive and the neighbors who are at least the owners of the rental apartments, the commercial neighbors there, everybody within that distance?[1700.33]
You have Pennsylvania, you have Dodge Street, and you have JFK because of the Kennedy Mall area. So, you know, there's actually three ways to get to this site, which I think helps that situation not make it all in one area. I know the Clawers would like your approval on this. I think it'd be an asset to that area. I think it'd be a great buffer between commercial and, and residential. And again, we kindly ask for your approval. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Frummelt?
Yeah, Dave.
Are there going to be market rate apartments?
I can't answer that and truthfully, only because of the fact that the developer is not here tonight, if he could answer that. I really didn't look into that part or, you know, we're looking more at the land, the price, the property, the building, et cetera. So I can't answer that.
But we will be educated about that at some point.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else to address the council in the chambers? Okay, do we have any virtual input?
We do not on this item.
Okay.
And the city clerk has not received any emails.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring it back to the table for any discussion.
I do have one more question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Kavanaugh.
This, actually, I thought of it after we got done talking to Wally, but it's a Wally question. You know, I'm looking at the map and thinking about the neighbors. I mean, and I saw that there were no public comments in the hearing. Were the neighbors all notified? I mean, neighbors from, you know, from Kebby Drive and the, the neighbors who are at least the owners of the rental apartments, the commercial neighbors there? Everybody within that distance was notified there?
So, Wally Wernamont Planning Services Manager, so as required with all rezonings with the planning development or with straight up traditional rezoning, we do notify all property owners within 200 feet of the area to be rezoned. So all those property owners that are on Kebby Drive that are within 200 feet or surrounding the entire parcel were notified of the request.
Okay, thanks, Wally. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, the motion is to receive and file and to remove the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Public hearing number two is request to rezone property at the corner of Peru Road, Louise Street, and Monroe Avenue.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
I move to receive and file the documents and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to finally, be finally passed, be suspended.
Second by Russell.
Motion by Mr. Kavanaugh, second by Mr. Russell. Wally, please.
Yes, Wally Wernamont Planning Services Manager. The second public hearing that you're hearing before us tonight is in regards to an application by Denise Vogt. Their property is located at the corner of Peru Road and Louise Street and Monroe Avenue. The request is to rezone property from R1 Single Family Residential to R3 Moderate Density Multifamily Residential to accommodate an off-premise residential garage. So Ms. Vogt came before the zoning advisory commission several months ago to request rezoning of the property to commercial service in order to allow mini warehousing, which would allow a garage for her property. As part of that public hearing, several of the neighbors spoke in opposition to requests. They had concerns with regards to commercial zoning located in their neighborhood. And as further, as we had additional discussion on it, I was able to speak with regards to the potential to table the request and to request rezoning to a residential zone to allow an off-premise residential garage. In order to obtain an off-premise residential garage, Ms. Vogt had to go before the zoning board adjustment to apply for a conditional use permit to permit that garage in an R3 zone. She did do that. It did go before the zoning board adjustment. They made their approval contingent on rezoning the property to R3 Moderate Density Multifamily Residential. At that same meeting, she was requesting to build a larger garage. The approval was for 720 square foot. She initially indicated she wanted an 1,800 square foot garage. The zoning board adjustment denied that request to be, to have a garage larger than 720 square foot. So her next step was to go to the zoning advisory commission and then to request that property to be rezoned from R1 Single Family to R3, which would allow that conditional use permit. The zoning advisory commission held that public hearing. There were neighbors that attended the meeting voicing concerns with regards to a very large garage. There was some discussion. They didn't have any objections to the smaller garage. And a conditional use permit is required because the proper, the garage is not located on the same lot as her home. It's located directly across the street from Monroe Avenue. The current site is an overgrown portion of land along a creek. There is an older dilapidated garage that's located there. So what she's proposing to do is to remove that older dilapidated garage and construct this new 720 square foot detached garage with approval of the zoning advisory commission and city council approval for rezoning to R3, which then would allow that zoning board adjustment approval for that conditional use permit for a detached garage. It's pretty complicated, a lot of approvals and contingencies that had to go along with this. But at that zoning advisory commission meeting, the zoning commissioners heard the, the neighbors and they actually altered her request and approved just one of the lots to be rezoned to R3 while allowing that second lot to remain R1 Single Family. So I think it's a good compromise for what they discussed. I think it achieves what Ms. Vogt was looking for. And it also allows that detached garage to be located in the neighborhood. That's all I have. I know Becky Kemp is available to answer any questions if you have a zoning advisory commission. Otherwise, I'd be able to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Wally. Any questions, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Rizik.
Yes, thank you. And as long as Ms. Kemp is there. So could you perhaps describe what your, the commission, obviously, when you just read it, it sounds, it's clear that the intention is to be bigger, that this person wants to have something bigger there at mini storage or an 1,800 square feet or something larger. And so you feel, as, as Wally mentioned, that this is a, a good compromise and that this is not going to be able to be bigger than 720 down the road I'm talking about? And I don't know if, is this just like a gateway change that she's doing here and it can be used for something bigger? Do you have an opinion on that at all?
I'm sure. Wally Wernamont Planning Services Manager, so the zoning board adjustment, the conditional use permit is what she's approved for. So no garage can be any larger than 720 square foot. In addition to the garage space, the outside of the area cannot be used for outside storage either. That's a condition that's, as part of that approval as well. In your packet, I listed some conditions that are tied to an off-premise residential garage. So in the future, if they wanted to expand that garage or make it larger, they would have to come back to the zoning board adjustment and apply for a new conditional use permit and a special exception to exceed that size. And that's the only way they could build a larger garage on that site.
Okay, and it can't, it has to be a closed garage, right? It can't be a pole barn or something with no doors and that kind of stuff, right?
So they did discuss the design of the garage briefly. There was a question by one of the commissioners with regards to, or one of the zoning board adjustment members, I should say, during the conditional use permit, whether or not it's going to be a pole barn design or if they were looking at doing a frame with siding similar to like that. There was some discussion that it could either be that from the applicant, whether they're proposing to have a pole barn design or whether it be more of a residential type garage setting where you're more traditional vinyl siding materials. They did not place a condition on the exterior design of the building. So it could actually be either metal pole barn structure type detached garage or more your traditional vinyl sided side structure. They do regulate the maximum height of the building, so the maximum height of that detached garage can only be 15 feet. And we would regulate that as part of the building permit process that would come to our office. We would verify the height requirement. So you're looking at basically a standard garage with maybe an eight to nine foot tall overhead door. It's up to them if they want to do one or a couple of doors. But they can actually do three doors depending on how they lay out the design of the garage, so.
All right, so thank you. So unlike the other, the last zoning, this is not going to come to us again. This is it. And this is, and they have options as far as putting doors on or not. I guess the reason I'm talking about that is the neighbors seem to, don't want to have things visible, whether it's outside or whether it's inside with the door wide open so it's like it's outside. So, but I mean, right now, it's not coming back to us for a design or anything like that. That's correct.
Correct, yes. Yes, you are correct.
All right, thank you.
And as one, if I could add, I apologize. So one of the criteria is that will outside storage be permitted in conjunction with such use? And then we would review and regulate structure. So it's for an off-premise garage. It's not for like a carport design where you have three sides and it's open. When we look at garages, they get approval, it's for fully enclosed. So on the request was not for an open design, carport design, so.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Wally? Okay, we are in a public hearing to consider city council approval of a request from Denise Vogt to rezone property located at the corner of Peru Road, Louise Street, and Monroe Avenue from R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District to R3 Moderate Density Family Residential Zoning District to accommodate an off-premise residential garage. Is there anyone in the chambers to address us on this? Just please state your name and address and then go ahead with your comments.
Denise Vogt, 723 Peru Road, Dubuque, Iowa. I am actually the applicant. And to answer the question, it will be a fully enclosed doored garage. It is for use of storing two classic vehicles and since I will then, currently, my brother owns the property and I'm purchasing it from him, with the exception that it does get passed because I'll need the garage. So with that, it is two lots, so I will then need storage for riding lawnmowers, lawn mowers, and outdoor things that, you know, is not to be sitting around. The place does look very disheveled right now and kind of rundown. I can't build a garage on my property because I have a private well there, so there's no room to build, so that's why I'm looking to purchase. It's just right across the street. It used to be joined at some point when I moved in in 96 and then it kind of got split up and it's been, yeah, so, so yeah. But to answer the question, it will be fully enclosed with locking garage doors and look very nice and, yeah, not, not some shed or...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that is, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the council in the chambers? Do we have any virtual comments?
We do not.
And no emails for this item.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions? Okay, the motion on the table is to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Russell.
Motion by Mr. Kavanaugh, second by Ms. Russell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Public hearing number three is request to rezone property at 1597 Delhi Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Kavanaugh. Wally, please.
Yes, good evening, Wally Wernamont Planning Services Manager. The request before you tonight is to rezone property from ID Institutional Zoning District. And that ID is part of the Finley Unity Point Campus. The proposal is to rezone the property from C2, or from ID to C2 Neighborhood Shopping Center Zoning District. The property or the subject parcel that we're discussing is L-shaped and has an area about 6,000 square feet. There is an existing structure located on the site. It's a two-story structure, has a basement in it. It used to house the former Dumed Medical Equipment Facility, if you guys are familiar with that, former use. The property has been vacant for many years. And the request is to rezone that property from ID to C2. If you look at the property and including in your packet, we have a map, it is actually sandwiched between two C2 Neighborhood Shopping Center districts. So this will actually connect those two C2 areas. The zoning advisory commission did hold a public hearing. And Robin Scalisi, I apologize if I mispronounce your last name, she was the representative of the property owner at Unity Point Health Finley, and she spoke in favor of the request. As I mentioned, they're looking at selling the property and the property's been vacant for many, many years. So at that meeting, staff reviewed the history of the property, very zoning designations over the decades, and also noted the previous designation used to be a C2 Neighborhood District for that property. So at the meeting, there was one public comment that was received that had to do with an adjoining business and they said some questions with regards to parking and if there were being off-premise or a surface parking lot associated with the building. The zoning advisory commission discussed that request and they had some questions specifically about what type of use to be used in the building. That was not confirmed. The applicant, Mr. Adams, and the property owner did not disclose the type of use. The only thing we would know is that the use would only be allowed or what's permitted in a C2 Neighborhood Shopping Center District. The commissioners discussed the request and felt that the rezoning to C2 fit well in the neighborhood, especially since it's adjoining to existing C2 Neighborhood Commercial Districts. There is associated parking lot with the building and there is some vacant land adjoining to it that a parking lot could be expanded if there is a greater intense use of the property that would require that. So by a vote of seven to zero, the zoning advisory commission recommends the city council approve the request and a simple majority vote is needed for city council to approve the rezoning. Vice Chairperson Becky Kemp is available to answer any questions you may have with the commission. Otherwise, I will be able to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Wally. Anyone have any questions? Okay, seeing none, we are in a public hearing to consider city council approval of a request from Jeff Adams to rezone property located at 1597 Delhi Street from ID Institutional District to C2 Neighborhood Shopping Center Zoning District. Is there anyone in the chambers to address us on this? Do we have any virtual input?
We do not.
And no emails for this item.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the table then for any discussion. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Kavanaugh. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Public hearing number four is B Branch Gate and Pump Replacement Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Sprank. Mike, are you going to have Cory read your emails? Okay, Cory?
City Engineer Gus Sehoyes recommends city council authorization to enter into, into a consent to easement structures agreement with the United States Army Corps of Engineers as a requirement for the city to proceed with the B Branch Gate and Pump Replacement Project. Because the proposed improvements associated with the B Branch Gate and Pump Replacement Project will be constructed within flowage easements controlled by the Army Corps, the city is required to enter a consent to easement structures agreement before proceeding with the project. The agreement establishes the requirements the city must follow when it constructs the improvements. The easement documents have been reviewed and approved by City Attorney Krena Brumwell. There is no cost associated with entering into the consent to easement structures agreement. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Cory. We are in a public hearing to consider city council authorization to enter into a consent to, of easement structures agreement with the United States Army Corps of Engineers as a requirement for the city to proceed with the B Branch Gate and Pump Replacement[1720.12] requirement for the city to proceed with the B-Branch Gate and Pump Replacement Project. Is there anyone in the chambers to address us on this? Is there anyone virtually to address us?
There's not. No emails received.
Okay, bring it back to the table for any questions? And seeing none, Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Public hearing number five is proposed lease agreement between the City of Dubuque and Kamalec Internet Services.
Mayor.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Kavanaugh, second by Mr. Jones. Cory, please.
Information Services Manager Chris Coleman, Civil Engineer to Dave Ness, and Sustainable Innovation Consultant David Lyons recommend city council approval of a lease with Kamalec Internet Services for space on the Third Street Water Tower. The term of the lease would be 15 years. Kamalec would pay an annual lease of $8,400, which is increased 3% annually. Kamalec will be responsible for removing the old radio tower previously used by Jewel Transit, which is no longer of value or use to the city and which needs to be removed from the property to allow for other future uses of the space. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Cory. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approval of a lease with Kamalec Internet Services for space on the Third Street Water Tower. Is there anyone in the chambers to address us on this? Anyone virtually to address us on this?
There's not. No emails received.
Okay, bring it back to the table for any discussion? Seeing none, Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
We will move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Is there anyone in the chambers to address the council? Is there anyone virtually to address the council?
Not. No emails received.
Okay, seeing no public input, we'll move on then to the action items. Adrian?
Action item number one is Dubuque Airport Master Plan Study and Airport Layout Plan Update.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Russell.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Ms. Russell, second by Ms. Farber. Cory, please.
Airport Director Todd Dollsing recommends city council approval of the Dubuque Regional Airport Master Plan Study and Airport Layout Plan Update recently prepared by Kaufman and Associates. The Dubuque Regional Airport Commission on October 26, 2021, accepted and recommended submitting the airport master plan to the Dubuque City Council for their approval. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Cory. Have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I just wanted to say this is an exciting plan. Thank you very much to our citizens on the commission for doing this, and I'm hoping that sometime there'll be some kind of presentation here at the council table so that citizens can see this. I think it's something they'd be really happy to know that's part of the master plan here. A lot of great things happening, so just a suggestion, but I absolutely thank everyone involved with this and plan to support it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Okay, the motion is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Action item number two is Resilient Community Advisory Commission Ordinance Update.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
I move to receive and file and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Mr. Kavanaugh, second by Mr. Sprank. Cory, please.
Sustainable Community Coordinator Gina Bell recommends city council approval of an ordinance amendment for the Resilient Community Advisory Commission regarding meeting frequency. Currently, the Resilient Community Advisory Commission must meet monthly. The language has been updated to read "regular meetings." The commission generally meets monthly. When there is no business, there is no obligation to meet, allowing for flexibility if there is no business to which the commission needs to address. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Cory. Have any discussion? Ms. Russell?
Yeah. I'd just like to, first of all, thank the commissioners that serve on that commission. And all of our commissions are made up of citizens who volunteer their time to give back to their community, and I think it's important that their time is well-used and that their experience is meaningful. And I think this new wording will allow the Resilient Community Advisory Commission to make the most of their commissioners' times and make their meetings more efficient.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, the motion is to receive and file and waive the first three readings, the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
I move for final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Mr. Kavanaugh, second by Mr. Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.